I'll order the North Andover School Committee meeting for October 1st, 2015, and we'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, so good evening, everyone, and just a reminder, we are being recorded, and please silence your, your mobile devices. In accordance with our current agenda, I'd like to call for any public comment, and as you may recall, this is public comment on anything related to our agenda or any school matter. So, this is a public comment opportunity? Mr. Tripp?
School matter, but it's not on the agenda? Is that appropriate?
This is appropriate this time.
I've been here, so I assumed I gotta sit down.
Whatever makes you comfortable, please.
Ted Tripp, 262 Boston Street, North Andover. Last month, September 17th, I think a lot of you know, was Constitution Day, and that's when we celebrate, when the Constitution was signed back in 1787 by thirty-nine delegates, long time ago. Actually inspired me to write a, an article about it for the local newspaper. It was very interesting that Massachusetts was actually a key in bringing about the Bill of Rights. Governor John Hancock, at the time of the Constitutional Convention we had in Massachusetts, suggested that some amendments be added after it was ratified, and one of the amendments he suggested, he suggested nine amendments, and only one actually was acted on, and that was our Tenth Amendment today, so it was very interesting history, so that was great. But during that, it also reminded me that we have a Massachusetts General Law, which is Chapter 71, Section 2, which requires all public elementary and high schools to teach American History and Civics, including the Constitution of the United States, the Declaration of Independence, and the Bill of Rights, and in all public high schools, the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and local history and government, and a program relating to the flag of the United States of America, including but not limited to proper etiquette, the correct use and display of the flag, the importance of participation in the electoral process, and the provisions of some other things, and for the purpose of promoting civic service and a greater knowledge thereof, and of fitting the pupils morally and intellectually for the duties of citizenship. So I'd like to ask, are we doing that in North Andover schools today, in the elementary and in the high school? Can somebody tell me on the committee today? Are we doing that?
Superintendent for Teaching and Learning?
Are we?
Yeah, I mean Constitution Day is something that we definitely cover. We do Flag Day. In addition to some of these things, we have all of the Veterans Day celebrations. The Constitution, Massachusetts Constitution of 1780, the National Constitution, our Constitution of 1787, all those things are covered at North Andover.
They're covered in the elementary schools as well as the high school?
Probably a lot more depth at the high school, but I can think of, I was just walking through one of the elementaries the other day, and they had the opening lines of the Constitution posted right by the cafeteria down at the Thompson, so.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure they are taught at both levels of the schools, that's all.
Yeah, that's something we could follow up on, too.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilligan. Any other public comment? This would be good time?
Just one last thing. Not the public comment piece, but we had one of three teachers that came in and spoke last time, that won a fellowship with C-SPAN this summer, one of three teachers across the entire nation, and I think one of the coolest things the other day at the middle school was, the C-SPAN bus between Harvard and Dartmouth stopped by, and he got to take all of his students from eighth grade history onto the bus, and they were giving away C-SPAN Pocket Constitutions for all the students, which I got one, by the way, and it's on my desk, which is really cool. And Mr. Tripp mentioned right before the meeting, in his possession tonight, which I'd love to borrow, but it makes me nervous, I don't want to spill anything, he has a copy of an 1840 Constitution that belonged to a history teacher with some annotations and explanations how to best teach it to students, so. Really important topic, and Mr. Tripp is also the president of the Patriotic Observance Committee here in town, I believe, chairman still, so. He helps out the schools, does articles, and I know, when I was principal, and I know the other principals, Dr. Foster, we all appreciate that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gilligan. Moving on, we have our student reports. Matt and Courtney?
Hello? Yes, since nothing, nothing really has changed since our last meeting, just one thing that I spoke upon with several students and my peers, that regarding our, since I'm a senior, our college readiness programs and everything, and getting, like communicating with our guidance counselors on best decisions for us, I would just like to bring up that, since that, right now, everyone is kind of stressing and cramming about this, they're trying to be in contact with their guidance counselors a lot, and it's just making things very hectic for them. I know it's difficult because there's only so many of them, there's five guidance counselors and three hundred, over three hundred students, it makes it very difficult, but the thing is, there are still several people who are, like, left in the dust there with, like, missing, say they have questions about their deadlines, questions about what needs to be put in where, like, those issues, they aren't, it's not that they're not getting attention, it's just, it's difficult to make time due to the vast majority of students that do need to meet the selected five guidance counselors.
Interesting. So, I'm just wondering, is this a growing issue, or is it just an observation at this point in your mind?
Well, I believe this is just an observation for the time being, because I've noticed with several students, when they will go into, the guidance office is packed full of students just waiting to meet with the guidance counselors, and it's taking time over class periods, so we kind of get behind in those classes. But I'm not saying anything poorly about the guidance, I know it's just a very difficult situation for them, because there's so few of them, and there's so many of us.
Yeah, maybe we should take a look at the ratio and see if there's anything we do for expanding hours, and good feedback, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing has really changed for the juniors and sophomores, especially the PSATs are coming up on October 14th, and everyone's prepping for that, and so far, everyone's doing really good. There's new clubs opening up. One poster I saw was a Pre-Health Society thing, and it's for aspiring doctors as students, and I'm really excited to join that, it starts next week.
Pre-Health?
Yeah, Pre-Health Society.
Exciting.
I will comment about the PSATs to the school committee, if you are not aware, that the College Board made a decision to only administer the PSATs during the school day, not on the weekends, which is a massive change, and one that has put many institutions in challenging places, because basically, you're required to give up half of a school day to administer the PSAT from a, from the College Board. And there's a lot of concern among especially high school principals, that this is a move by the College Board to basically force all schools to give up class time to administer. So you can only take the PSAT this year during the school day on a Wednesday, there are no Saturday tests. And so every high school, pretty much in America, is having to shut down teaching and learning for sophomores and juniors, or just juniors, during that time in the entire country.
Why was that changed?
College Board made that decision.
But is there a reason why?
Their decision, their feeling was that they're piloting a new test, and they needed a larger sample size, and that also, they were wanting to make sure that all students, regardless of socioeconomic background, got an access to the PSAT. There are others who think that there was concerns potentially that the ACT was gaining traction in the country, and that might have been a move. The challenge is, as a school, I dealt with this as a high school principal in my previous position, as a school, you can't say, "No, we're not going to give the PSAT," because then all of a sudden, your kids are being precluded from the opportunity. And obviously, we don't want to disadvantage our students from taking the PSAT and also being eligible for national merit and all of those things, so there is some real resistance to it, feeling like we've given really no choice.
Yes, sounds like it.
I'm just curious, how much notice did they give?
They told us last spring.
Oh, did they? Okay.
But it is a significant change.
Yeah.
And there really wasn't an opportunity, at least it was not felt, that there was an opportunity for authentic feedback about the impact that that would have, so. Every high school in America, I mean, maybe not all, but I would assume most will be giving the PSAT either on the 14th or the 21st, and we didn't, you don't even have any choice of time. They told you what time to.
Do students pay for this test?
They do.
So the students who don't take the test?
They have other options, but their classes are gonna.
Disrupted.
Disrupted.
It seems like an infringement on, I mean, they're taking ownership of school time, that doesn't seem.
They are.
And, yeah, that doesn't seem reasonable.
They are, but it's the College Board.
Yeah.
The College Board is also offering the SAT this weekend, so maybe several students at North Andover High School will be in there, taking the SAT right early Saturday morning.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a tough situation.
Do you think there will be more participation, because it will be during school?
So that's what the College Board is hoping, is that there will be more participation because it's during school. They have claimed that it is a pilot for one year, some are cynical about that claim.
Has there been any discussion in the MASC about?
I haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen anything.
Because this seems like something that might be.
There has definitely been discussion among secondary school principals, who are most impacted, but I don't know if you've seen anything with the MASC.
I haven't seen anything, nor do I remember seeing any notice.
Yeah, I don't, it's catching me very by surprise, I don't remember seeing anything and nothing kind of across the.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, there's not much we can do in this situation.
And is it still on paper, or is it, I mean, other?
It's still a paper test, I believe.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to be sure.
Because we haven't had to have technology impact on that.
There would have had to have been requests for technology.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, right.
CDPA.
Go with me.
So who administers the test? Like, actually administers it?
So, I believe that teachers will be administering it, but I don't know the answer.
I don't think it, like, a proctoring fee from?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that, I know that that was an issue of discussion in my previous district, but I don't know the answer to that one here. I can ask Dr. Scuzzarella.
I think they used to, but that was because it was on Saturday.
Yeah, they can't get, they can't get paid during the school day.
Now the school district is paying to administer their test?
You know, for-profit and non-for-profit testing agencies on our time with our resources, so it'd be helpful to find out if that indeed is happening.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine that they're being compensated for, during the school day.
Our understanding right now is that this is nationwide, it's every high school.
Well, that's great, but we should then be billing them for the time and facilities that we're offering them during our, during our school day.
So my understanding is actually with the PSAT, I think I'm correct in this, that the PSAT just pays you for the test, and then money is collected by the administrators to pay for the proctoring, so it's not like the SAT where you actually, the proctors are paid through the SAT, so they, they could, I believe, claim that we're only paying for the test, not for the proctoring.
It'd be helpful to find out that information.
Yep, I can find that out, no problem. I just don't want you to be surprised.
No, that's good, that's good, that's the first, certainly I've heard of it, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, it's obviously important. Anything else on the, on our update? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Indeed. So if there's no objections, I'd like to move on to our consent agenda. We have two items, approval of regular session minutes and acceptance of a Sargent PTO donation. I'd like to take this one at a time if we could, so if anyone has an objection, I'd like to hear a motion for the acceptance of the school committee meeting minutes from September 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Great, any discussion? I do have one minor correction, the motion for executive session was as printed, however, at the end of the North Andover Gestapo Association, I believe Mr. McDevitt also indicated, and to return to open session, and that's the only edit I had as a request on the summary.
So amended.
Any other questions or concerns? No, so all in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And no?
I wasn't here, so I'm gonna abstain.
Oh, so there is one, there's one abstention, Zor is abstaining. And second item, this is the acceptance of a Sargent PTO donation in the amount of $91,220 for playground work. Can we have a motion to accept the donation?
So moved.
And great, so now we can discuss. We have, we have an update?
I'm Kathleen Bass, I'm here on behalf of the Sargent PTO and the Playground Committee that was involved in the project, and the source of funding for the work was from the Community Preservation Committee, and we were here towards the end of last school year to talk about the work that was going to be done, and it was done over the summer, so that involves some new pieces of play equipment that were installed, as well as some kind of hardscaping work around putting in asphalt for a basketball court, and a wall ball, off-the-wall play area, and there was striping work done, and containment border was put in around the play area that has the mulch in it. So everything went well, everything was within budget, and so we're done, and we'd like to make the, formally make the donation to the school.
Wonderful, wonderful. I recall reviewing the artist's rendition and a couple of modifications along the way, so it's, it's a great, it's a great asset to the school, and thank you very much for shepherding and piloting this approach to how we can improve the playgrounds and facilities at our, at our schools. I guess with regards to the funding mechanism, and this might be more of an administrative question, so the, the PTO is providing the donation, although it's provided by CPA monies, so is there any other Board of Selectmen or FinCom approval required, or is, are we all good?
No, it's already gone through that process.
Oh, yes, good.
All, and what the school committee is accepting is the equipment itself as a donation.
I see, okay.
And the equipment's worth $91,000?
Correct, work and equipment.
Right, so that includes the play equipment that was installed, as well as work done by a contractor on site, so that's.
And, well, that's an incredible amount of money, it's like a great. So you guys raised $91,000?
So this was applied for, so we put in a proposal, a project proposal to CPC, and it was one of the projects during that year, during that cycle that was funded, was awarded funding.
It was also funded from the PTO as well.
How much, I know that part, but how much was, how much was Sergeant PTO raised?
Okay, so, so other work that was done in previous, the two years before that, was probably equivalent amount, around $90,000 to $95,000 from the PTO. So this project was broken up into three phases, and the PTO covered the cost for the first two phases, and then it was the CPC funding that we used to cover the last phase, which was done this summer.
So you raised $91,000?
Yeah, I mean, it was broken out over a couple of years.
How, how did you raise that money? That's a lot of brownies and cakes.
Yeah, so I think before we formally started the project, there had been some money that the PTO had been setting aside for the playground already, over the course of a couple of years, and then we do a fun run in the fall, which is the PTO's primary fundraiser, and it had been very successful the past couple of years, and so we were able to set aside money from our, money that's raised from the fun run. So, you know, the PTO gets the money, has its budget, it's, it's covering all that it needs to cover for the school year, for supporting, teacher support, and what we do within the school, but there was, you know, with good budgeting and the amount of money that came in, additional money was able to be set aside, the past, those couple of years leading up to the project, too.
I have a little history to this, it actually is much longer than that. What happened is, I don't know, maybe ten years ago or so, the Sargent Playground actually got shut down for a full year at the school, because the equipment was in disrepair, and so after a year of having the equipment shut down, the Sargent PTO took it upon themselves to raise money to actually fix the equipment and get it so that the school had a working playground, after not having a playground for the entire year. Since that time, the PTO was putting money aside each year, knowing full well that the, that the work that was done on the playground was really temporary, and it was not a long-term fix, and so that's, this has been years in the making of, that didn't just come overnight, certainly not from just bake sales, it came from a lot of hard work for a lot of people at the Sargent community.
I guess I'm just trying to get to, was raised though by parents, I mean, there's obviously other PTOs that want to raise money to have playgrounds as well, but is there some silver bullet, or was just parental donations? Are there strategies you can share with other PTOs that could help them raise the same kind of money?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was just donations from, you know, parents to the school over time, yeah. We had, we did a direct donation campaign last spring.
And actually, Karen Davis, who led the Playground Committee a few years ago, actually met with all the PTOs to share not only what, what Sargent had done in terms of fundraising, but also all that they had done in terms of planning and working with different companies, the vetting process that they used to select the companies, to actually get the, the area, I guess, like, the site survey and all the different things that they did, there was, this is a long process of years to put this all together, and she actually shared all of her materials, all the steps, everything that she had done with all the PTO, so that, that's already been, that's already happened and been in place, and she's been very available to, to all the schools, I mean, the whole committee, certainly.
This effort actually set a precedent, too, that the town manager has been built on, where using CPC funding for the playgrounds, and the town manager is actually contributing annual funding to do all of the playgrounds, school and town, in a plan going out six or seven years now, and Franklin has a groundbreaking, or not a groundbreaking, but a grand opening this month. So that one just got done, and then they're going to go through based on a priority list that was created, but it's kind of set the precedent for that.
We did have support from some local businesses, so for example, Peter Breen did some demolition work when the old place structures needed to be taken down, and so I think he, you know, donated time, and we paid for the equipment, for example, and so there was, you know, a company that donated the concrete, you know, that we needed, you know, when we did a, a community build, that reduced the labor costs, so we were able to, I think, utilize some support locally, volunteer labor, and, and you know, that helped with the amount of money that we had as well.
Do we have any, maybe for Jim, do we have any issues with the public bidding laws or anything like that? I remember when we did the Thompson School, we had some issues back about four or five years ago with the, the public bidding laws when we used that.
Right, yeah, no, well, all through the process, we included Assistant Town Manager Ray Santilli, who's also the purchasing manager for the town, to ensure that proper procedures were followed.
Right, so I worked directly with Ray on this last phase, so for the money that was spent from, with the CDC funds, you know, I worked with Ray in terms of, you know, just the steps I had to go through and passing things through him.
That's great, yeah.
Great, groundbreaking.
Yeah, that's impressive number.
Yeah, and sustained, sustained effort here, it's a real model to our community, so thank you.
So I'd just like to again say thank you, but you know, I know that you recognize the parents that, you know, have contributed, and the businesses, and I'm sure the teachers as well, but the planning committee for this, the parents that kind of got together and really kind of mapped it all out, I mean, so much, when, when you volunteer to do things in a school, sometimes, you know, there's only a couple of people who kind of do that, and this project would not have happened without many dedicated volunteers and parents who, some of them, I'm sure their children have now, are gone up to the middle school, and they're not even recognizing that, so I really just want to acknowledge them from the community, because I think that they did a fantastic job. I haven't seen the last stages all the way completed, but prior to that, I mean, just a world of difference, and it's fantastic. And I do think, and I don't, I'm not sure if it's there or not, but I happened to be in Gloucester the other week, and I saw a sign at the playground that basically recognized some of the community program, not community programs, community preservation funds that were donated, and some of the other things that are as well, so I don't know if that's in the works, but I think it's great to acknowledge that, and I think it helps teach the kids about giving back, and who has given back to the community as well, so maybe we can work on some form of recognition.
Yeah, no, it's a really good idea, yeah.
But, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, so is no further discussion?
Can I just ask, I think if we're gonna do this for all the money that gets donated from CPC, we need to make sure that we do that consistently, I think, for all of the builds that get done. So this, this one is for CPC, but I think for Franklin, too, did we do, there was the same thing, right, with CPC funds?
Yeah, wouldn't, that's a town project, so it wouldn't be the same thing, this is a donation from the Sargent PTO that utilized CPC funding, so you're, you're accepting the equipment and the work that was done.
Okay.
Okay, so no further discussion, all in favor of accepting the Sargent PTO playground equipment and renovation work as outlined on the document in the packet, value of $91,220, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, 5-0, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Moving on, chair's report's gonna be brief, if you recall, during our retreat, we discussed a little bit about having liaisons with the PTO, PTAC, and other parent associations. I did send a email out to the president's email distribution list, and recently did receive some positive feedback. Atkinson, Kittredge, Sargent, and the high school have responded positively that they would like liaison assigned, and I have their meeting schedules and the next meeting dates coming up. Sargent's is actually next week, which is obviously very quick, and I just wanted to put to the committee, in the past when we've had liaisons, we typically had a liaison to the school where a student, a school committee member relationship didn't exist, so as the representation to the PTO was not, of an uncomfortable relationship with the principals and whatnot, so if there is any particular interest in Atkinson, Kittredge, Sargent, or the high school, maybe we can meet afterwards and just let me know a preference, so we can, we can create that alignment, and we can, we can hopefully get people to attend the next upcoming meeting, again, Sargent's is unfortunately during the daytime on the 7th, Kittredge's is on the 8th, and the others are the week after. Okay, that's all I have?
I have a short superintendent's report also, just want to shout out, as they say at Sargent, to the 20th anniversary celebration that happened last week, it was absolutely wonderful, and it was wonderful to see the Calzetta family there, recognized as donating or working with the town for the land, it was a wonderful, it was really wonderful, and the kids seemed really excited, and we got to hear the song, their Sargent song, "Raise Me Up," it's still in my head. It was, it was really wonderful, and Karen, Karen Leahy did an amazing job really pulling it together, and so, and Dr. Foster, and it was a wonderful opportunity to celebrate. The Playground Committee was actually recognized at the time in front of the whole school community, so it was really wonderful. It was on TV, on cable, so you can actually see the ceremony if you'd like, the Calzetas were the highlight, in my opinion, so, and it would be fun to see. And as we reported last time, Mr. Gilligan reported, the map testing has almost completed, and this past Wednesday, the, many of the teachers, one through five, actually did some professional development about how to use the results and analyze the results to really support students, and a fun part of that was, Mr. Gilligan became the central office sub-coordinator, where all of us got the opportunity to become substitutes in the district, so Mr. Mealy was over at the Atkinson Elementary School, Mr. Gilligan was at Franklin, I had the pleasure of substituting in 5B, Ms. Romano's class over at Sargent, and we all had a real blast, so it was a wonderful day for us to be subbing, and I'd never taught an elementary school class before, so it was a little scary, I'll be honest, and the highlight of probably my year was a young lady at the end came up to me, and she goes, "Well, given that this is your first elementary school class, I think you did a very good job."
That's better criticism to get from us, right?
That was the best. Anything else anyone says is downhill.
We could out-tot that.
Busy day for Miss Mealy.
Yeah, how'd you do, all right? Did you get any kind of compliments?
The funniest thing I had was, I was doing the drop-off line out in the rain, and a little kindergarten is getting out of the car, and he hands me the note, and he says, "That's for Melanie," and then he takes off.
And Mr. Gilligan did two classes at Franklin, right?
Yeah, whole day, half-day, and third grade half-day, and fourth grade, and I'll tell you what, I think every central office administrator in the state should do this once or twice a year, because it really grounds you, that's the passion of what we all started to do early in our careers, and it also gives me, you know, I have a lot of respect for teachers, but, you know, when you're on a schedule where your 21-minute lunch turns into 11, because you're helping this kid get there, and you can only go to the bathroom at this time, you realize every day that, you know, how hard they work, how organized they are, and particularly at the elementary school, they prepare everything because they teach all subjects, and I was blown away by the substitute lesson plans.
The lesson plans we received were incredible.
Down to the detail for social studies, mathematics, ELA, I mean, it was, it was amazing, so it was a great experience.
Very good.
That's it?
Thank you very much. With the committee's indulgence, I'd like to take New Business Out of Order and address 8, 8A. We have an attendance this evening. We have, uh, in attendance this evening, uh, Dr. McGrath, who's, uh, representing Authentic Music Association, who has a, uh, facility use waiver fee request. So if it's reasonable with the committee, we'd like to move to that to free up the evening for him. Good evening.
Good evening. Martin McGrath, one fifty Johnson Street. Uh, president of the North Andover Music Association. And, um, I'm submitting a, a request, uh, if we could. Uh, there's more details that have emerged since I put in my original request to have the fees waived, uh, for us to have the movable stands moved onto the far side of, uh, Walsh Stadium for the NESBA marching band competition, which we are hosting in conjunction with the, um, high school music department on Saturday, October third. That is this Saturday. Uh, if it doesn't rain. Um, so, uh, the main issue, uh, if I might, is that, uh, there, there is, for large events like this, there is inadequate seating in the permanent stands at Walsh Stadium. So if any of you have been to a Friday night, uh, football game, you'll know that the seats, the, the permanent seating is completely filled. And if the opposing team is nearby and they have any sizable group of their fans who come, A, there's no place for them to sit on where their side of the team is situated. And B, if they happen to show up with their band, like Acton Boxborough did, there's no place for their band to go ahead and set up. And so when we have twelve marching bands coming, nine hundred performers on Saturday and, uh, two point five spectators for every performer, uh, we're very quickly gonna run out of, uh, seating for, uh, in the permanent stands. So we typically work in conjunction with the athletic department uh, to go ahead and have the movable stands moved to the far side of the field. There are five available, three small, two large. Um, various, uh, varying degrees of difficulty to get them from their usual home. But in this case, this year, uh, because of the athletic field usage and a soccer tournament that's coming up in the following weekend, we haven't been able to coordinate with the athletic department to get those moved there for the athletic purposes. And so, uh, the North Andover Music Association is going to be charged for moving the stands onto and off the field. And this is a major fundraiser for NAMA. And all of the money that we raise gets used to help support the music programs in all of Nat, North Andover Public Schools. So we put this request forward because we're just trying to make sure that as much money as we can possibly raise goes to the kids and not to, um, you know, ancillary fees.
Yeah, as a prior coordinator of that activity, um, you know, I can share that, um, you know, working with the custodial staff, um, is always a very positive experience. And certainly, um, we've, we've been able to coordinate the, uh, moving of the bleachers based on time alignment be, between other activities where they needed to be in the stadium anyway. Um, I don't think we had any choice on this particular weekend. This one was, was issued.
Yes.
And I know that there's high contention for field, uh, um, access with the other activities growing. So I think Mr., um, um, Ms. McGrath brings up a couple of very valid points. One being that we have an inadequate seating problem in the stadium that I think we might need to, to look at with, with CIP and other options to us. Um, but also that these activities, um, are significant fundraisers to the, to the enrichment programs. And, uh, in the past, we were able to work around these fees. But this, this would take a significant chunk out of, uh, providing stipends to, um, technicians or, uh, additional programs, um, both at the middle school and the elementary schools. So, um, while I, uh, I see the need for that and I know the, uh, the, the use, uh, of facilities policy is clear here. And because the event is tomorrow, I didn't know if there was opportunity or if there's been discussion about minimizing the cost by augmenting the labor force.
Uh, well, we've discussed that with the custodians in the past and, um, you know, essentially, we didn't pursue it this year because what we've been told is that there's particular equipment that they need to use and the custodians need to use it. It's not like, uh, we can get a hundred people and they're just gonna go pick up the stands and move them. Um, and so we, we've basically been told, because we typically have a large number of volunteers helping us set up the event, um, that that really wouldn't help. The custodians who know what they're doing really need to take advantage, to, uh, take charge of that and go ahead and move the equipment. Now, if, I, I will go ahead and add that, um, because of the field usage and the fact that we've had significant rain over the last couple of days, uh, there has been no time, uh, for the custodians to move any of the stands. And so, uh, there isn't enough time left for them to move the two large stands from their homes. They could move the three small ones for us. However, the three small ones, just, uh, to let you know, will only provide two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-eight additional seats. And as I said, we've got nine hundred performers plus, you know, probably two thousand plus, uh, spectators coming. So that will only make a, a small dent in, in what we would need. It would help, but, um, it's, uh, that's all we're possibly gonna be able to get at this time.
Any other comments or questions?
Questions, please. Maybe Mr. Mealy knows this. How often do we assess this fee? There's a lot of worthy nonprofits in town that I'm sure would love to have this fee waived as well, but how?
Well, it, it's not an administrative decision. That's why it's here tonight. It's a, by policy, a school committee decision that is made. Um, we don't get too many that come to the school committee.
No, I, I understand that has to, we have to waive the fee, but I'm just wondering, how often do we assess the fee? Uh, and how much money do we?
Oh, oh.
Word raised.
The way it is, right, the way it is right now, um, the fee does not fully cover the true cost of the custodians.
Yep.
Um, so it is timed and we've actually been working with, um, Mr. Gross on coming forward with a new facilities plan. That would include, um, a recommendation for adjusting those so that we do, um, cover the true cost.
Yeah, Mr. Strickland.
And included in that would be, uh, the possibility of groups that, um, wouldn't have to pay that fee.
Right.
I think in the past, we were, we were successful and lucky that they had to be moved anyway for other events within the stadium. So it was just, it was part of what the athletics department needed to reconfigure the upper stadium, the lower stadium, or the upper field, the lower stadium.
So do we know how, how often do we assess this fee?
It doesn't happen often at all. It has, I, this is my seventh year. It hasn't happened.
Okay.
Since I've been here.
I was just gonna say, I don't think we've voted on this hour.
I understand that we have to vote to waive it. I'm just wondering how often it's assessed. Uh, he's coming for a waiver.
Assess, okay.
He's coming for a waiver, but I wonder how often.
It's been somewhere between seven and ten years since the last time it was done.
So how often do we actually charge?
Actually, it's charged somebody. How often do we charge, like, the soccer association, the football, the boosters? How often do we actually assess the fee?
Yeah, this, this, actually, you'd be surprised. It's quite a bit of use. I know that in the account, we usually end up with about fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars a year that then is used to pay for custodial overtime for those events. And like I said, it doesn't cover the true amount, but that's how much we get in, in a year.
So with all the PTOs, like they pay for custodial staff and so on, for, right in the, in the evening times when they have events and things, all, they all pay for?
They pay for custodial staff and they pay for food services staff as well, for certain events.
This is, this is a reconfiguration of, of facilities. This is not, the, the, NAMA also pays for the custodial staff to be there for the event. However, however long that takes. This is to reconfigure the facility to accommodate the activity.
Does this require additional custodial staff to do this?
Yes.
Over and above what you, what you.
Over and above what we, what.
Outside of the event.
Yes, correct.
Correct. So it's to pay the salaries of additional custodians to come and move.
To, to reconfigure the facility for the event. And that, that I think is what's hard to tease apart in the use of facility funds.
Yeah, that would be.
Because I don't think the, the level of detail of what the, what the billing is indicates that this was to reconfigure the facility versus to have the custodian available for the event. So that, that's a challenge. I don't, I don't, in, in the research we did last year, I didn't see, um, any of the town-sponsored en, enrichment programs um, paying for that, but I may be, I may be incorrect.
I'm gonna have to look.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you think, you think twenty-eight times a year, people are paying this fee approximately?
Not this fee. This doesn't happen very often at all. But I was talking, I was talking about.
Okay.
Events, covering events.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we will be paying for custodians to be present, doing, helping us move tables and, you know, set up, cleaning up. All of that during the event and, you know, we pay for that fully.
Yeah. So this, so I think what we have here is a request to have waiver of the facility reconfiguration fee to support the event.
Right.
And it doesn't happen often.
Yeah, I understand that. So, um, how much do you expect to raise, um, on Saturday?
What's the weather?
What, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. So last year, the event was indoors, uh, and we actually were quite successful with an indoor show. Fewer people come if it's indoors.
Sure.
Uh, 'cause it's less fun, 'cause the bands can't march on a basketball court.
Understand.
They can in a football stadium. Uh, we were able to raise ten thousand dollars for NAMA. Previous year, when we were outdoors, we were able to raise closer to fifteen thousand dollars.
Is NAMA, um, it's just a private nonprofit with, they just donate money to, back to the music programs in the school?
It's, uh, yes. Uh, so it's a parent-run nonprofit organization and all of the money we raise goes to, uh, enrichment of the music programs, either through monetary donations to cover certain, uh, things such as, um, seven thousand dollars to go ahead, uh, and, uh, sponsor financial assistance for the Disney trip a couple of years ago. Um, or paying for new xylophones and marimbas, which cost over six thousand dollars. Uh, so typically, every year, NAMA goes ahead and makes donations to the music programs, both at the middle school and at the high school. Uh, anywhere between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars a year. About three, uh, sorry, four or five years ago, we actually realized that there was a greater need and we had a capital campaign and raised over thirty thousand dollars to replace all of the marching drums, many of the mallet instruments for the front ensemble of the marching band, as well as all of the tubas and a number of other instruments. Um, and so actually that, in addition with, with other equipment that we donated that year, we submitted, um, approximately forty thousand dollars in new musical instruments and equipment to the band, uh, four or five years ago. But that was a special campaign and typically, as I said, it's between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars a year in donations.
Thank you. Mr. Mealy, do we, um, do we just send them a bill usually or do they have to, I mean, obviously this is coming up on Saturday. This is the first reading, so do we need to expedite this? Or are we just gonna send them a bill if we don't?
It, we could hold it if, you know, we had to, it doesn't, they don't have to pay it right away.
Well, yes, I, I'm, I'm predisposed to saying yes. I mean, I think it's obviously a worthy endeavor. Um, I just wanna make sure that we are, and now that I'm the, I guess, the liaison to the facilities committee. Very excited about.
Surprised.
Um, I think I need to kind of, you know, dig down deep, see if we're just setting a precedent that we're just gonna waive. Cause you said.
This has been done in the past.
Okay.
It, it isn't al, it isn't always that, um, they can coordinate it so that it doesn't impact costs, but it's been waived when that has happened.
My point is, he doesn't need to show up with a five, check for five hundred and forty dollars on Saturday and things that we call.
Not at all.
Okay, okay.
Uh, no, no, the cust, custodial service would, would go ahead and bill us and that usually takes a couple of weeks afterwards. And as I said, the five hundred and forty dollars would be for all five stands, which will require more hour, man-hours to move. If they're gonna be moving fewer stands, the number would be smaller.
And if you're indoors?
And if we're indoors, the stands don't get moved.
And when's, when's that decision point?
That decision point, uh, based on the weather in New England.
When Harman Nein says so.
Will be, uh, will be most likely Friday night or Saturday morning.
Mr. Chairman, are you looking to suspend the rules to, to, to approve this tonight or you're just gonna have a first reading here and we can discuss this later on?
No, I'm not. I'm not. Yeah, this is the first reading. I would not propose to resuspend the rules. I, I would like to just make sure that there are no other options available to the, um, to the organization that would minimize the costs in the end, in the event that the committee chooses not to waive the fee. And as long as the answer to that is no, um, then I think it is what it is. We'll let mother nature and, uh, and sound judgment determine what, if any, uh, costs the organization exhibits. And then at the second reading, we would, we would either vote to waive or not to waive those costs.
Last, last question. Not that I'm saying you would do this, but by contract, do the custodians have to do this? Or if they had, you know, ten high school football players that wanted to come help up and move them themselves? Or this has to be done by the custodians?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought so.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's.
Gilligan was gonna offer to, to do it.
I've actually, I've actually.
I see him walking right through the.
I've actually helped do it when I was the vice principal there years ago. And it's quite an operation. I, they, there's some type of special lift or mach, thing that they use.
Right, right.
These dolly systems. And it took all day and they were showing at a custodial one day and I helped out. And, um, it seems like probably like most years, if there's one of those athletic events that's a big Friday night event and then they just happen to be there, that sometimes times up. You know, more often than not, I think, but.
Yes.
I'm not much of a power tool, so I'm gonna pass myself.
I have to write a check.
But Dr. McGrath, is there a case?
Can you get the two big s, stands moved?
No, we've been told by Dave Philbrook that, uh, the man-hours it would take, uh, in, in order to move them, they just, they don't have the time to be able to move the two big ones as well as the three small ones. And so that the best that they could do for us would be to get the three small ones at this point. Uh, the, the weather this week and the, the use of the fields has conspired against us.
Great.
Okay.
Any questions?
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, so before we leave that, I think the, the other message is that we're very tight on our facility, uh, scheduling. And we do, I think, not only for these events, but for other events, have challenges with the inadequacy of the stadium seating that we, I think, need to, need to think about in our CIP discussions.
Yeah, I know the, the, one of the issues typically is that there's two perfect fields there, one football and one soccer, and then a matching football or soccer on the other side. So when they play double games or double practices, there's just no room. And Kachikowick Brook is just right on the other side with the wetland markers all banged in every five feet.
Plus, we now have a path to add to the, uh.
And there's a path.
And there's a path. Great. So, um, what I'd like to do is jump back to old business and complete that and then return back to new business if that's reasonable. Great. So, uh, next on our agenda is seven A, discussion of school committee meeting dates, January through June. And, uh.
We proposed a series of meeting dates. We said at our summer retreat, retreat in August that we would come back and finalize the dates. Um, there's been some requests to try to do that. Um, so here are the dates. Um, and if anyone has any concerns about those dates, it would be helpful to let us know now.
So the only change I see is on May nineteenth, which was proposed in August during the retreat, to the twenty-sixth. I think everything else is in alignment with what we discussed back on.
Yes.
Back on, back in August.
So I can just tell you, um, I will not be here on the twelfth.
Would we need to have a meeting on the twelfth, two days after town meeting? Or maybe one day after town meeting?
That was my question. If we're gonna be meeting the tenth anyway.
That's fine.
We, we tend to, um, it's not really a formal.
Yeah.
Meeting, but I mean, we have, if we have anything prior to town meeting, I think we meet at like six or something, if there's anything last minute. But I'm, y, you guys can meet without me. I'm just.
Well, there's a lot of good stuff on that meeting. I mean, there's the handbooks, there's the health report, there's the annual wellness policy, concussion emergency plans and appointment of the school physicians. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff on the twelfth. Uh, the, the nineteenth now, the twenty-sixth is pretty light though.
So we could a, absolutely move that stuff on the twelfth to the twenty-sixth if you'd like.
Or we could.
I'm, I'm fine with being absent. I'm just, I'm just, my son turns twelve on the twelfth, so I'm not missing it. So, but.
Yeah, I, I don't see necessarily any tie to town meeting. I mean, we, we do in our own business. We're not.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not enough business, then that, that would be okay.
That's a different story.
So we should hold a date?
I think so. I think so. Any other challenges?
Is there a need to meet, I'm sorry, sorry again.
Sorry, March twenty-fourth, I can't confirm yet, but I, I may not be here that day.
March twenty-fourth is our budget status report, or that's currently the only thing that's, that's showing on the agenda.
Okay.
Or the tentative agenda. Okay. Um, is that a request to reschedule or, um?
No.
Okay.
I'm not certain. I, I don't want, I don't want to change or I'm not, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, understood.
Is there any, five, five weeks in a row?
I was gonna question that. I mean, four.
That's the budget, right?
Four weeks in January?
Again.
In the past.
Yeah, yeah. This is what our schedule used to look like.
Historically, yeah.
Historically. I would certainly think that we could do without meetings on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth or four meetings in January. I don't think there has been, we've had a need. I would defer to Mr. Mealy though.
I, I think you could probably do without one of them. Um, the seventh is the presentation of the budget. And then the fourteenth and the twenty-first are the opportunities to ask questions, you know, deep, deep into the, the budget. So one of those could go. The twenty-eighth is the public hearing and the fourth is the final approval. So it would be the fourteenth or the twenty-first.
So let's see. Would, would, would be better to have, to keep the meeting on the fourteenth because we will have just heard it a week earlier and we'll have questions. And then at least delete the meeting on the twenty-first.
Right. And what we've done in the past is have it scheduled and then on the fourteenth, decide if we need a twenty-first or not.
So just a reminder, the twenty-first is also the week of Martin Luther King Day. So just a reminder, the twenty-first is also the week of Martin Luther King Day. Uh, so that's an early, uh, early or short week. And just looking at the proposed agenda, the fourteenth also includes, um, the renewal of the Cambridge Institute and public hearing, budget discussion of the two things that show on the tentative agenda, based on our retreat schedule.
On the January fourteenth?
January fourteenth, correct.
Well, I, we can, I, I think Mr. Mealy has a reasonable suggestion, which, let's leave it, and then we'll, we can cancel it on the fourteenth, right?
We'd be proposing canceling the fourteenth as opposed to the twenty-first.
No, no, leave them all.
Leave them all.
And on the fourteenth-
Make a decision.
About the twenty-first.
Okay, great. I'm good with that. Any other comments? Nope. So I know we don't have to vote on this, but, uh, it looks like we've got a, um, at least a consensus on this is our schedule. And, uh, if, you know, urgent, emergent, uh, meetings or issues come up, we do have remote participation as necessary, subject to, uh, town, town, uh, town board of selectmen approval and, uh, open meeting law. Okay?
Thank you.
Great, let's close that. Next item is continued discussion on school committee goals.
So, um, based on our discussion at our last meeting last week, um, I took the opportunity with our, my staff to, uh, redraft the first two school commo- committee goals and call them district priorities. Um, and using the process that we used for my goals, um, tried to really come up with key actions and benchmarks for each of them. So the first, I changed, um, from transition to a performance-based process for targeted initiatives, as, which includes data-driven decision-making around implementation and thoughtful assessment around effectiveness. And specifically, we're proposing that we use this approach to assess two current initiatives that, uh, the school committee has voted in over the last few years. One is the seventh grade applied math program, and the other is our elementary literacy model. And that the idea would then be also for our new initiatives that we're gonna put forward for this year to have them, uh, data-driven in terms of making decisions on them. We would, our benchmarks would be reports to the school committee, um, by, uh, January about the applied math and the elementary school literacy mo- model, and to ensure that we thought about this during the budget process. So that was an attempt to, to make that, the deliverables clear. And then, um, kept the exact same goal as, uh, Mr. Lippert had written for the facilities needs. Um, and the process for that is something, regardless of this being a priority or not, we are going to do, which is, um, enrollment projection model, which Mr. Mealy is working very hard on right now, uh, working with the town manager to assess facility needs, work with school committee to find our cat class size guidelines, which we're gonna need to do, um, and then determine the appropriate spaces needed based on enrollment and class size. Um, and so, we would be presenting the enrollment projections to all of you. And then refine the additional classroom CIP project that is already on the bo- on the books, with the focus of beginning this process in July twenty-seventeen, um, with the first year being an assessment. And then revisit and refine class guy- guidelines by December. So took those two, made them district priorities, um, and left untouched the school committee goals.
Very good.
Uh, just one question. I, I'm assuming that for the rest of the budgeting process, we'll still have, uh, project-based budgeting? I mean, packaged budgeting like we've had in the past?
It'll be, um, divided into programs, so you can see the programs.
The way we've seen in the past, yeah.
Yep.
And we will only look at these selected initiatives from a performance point of view.
Exactly, yeah.
Which makes complete sense.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I think this is a, a good compromise, far better than I could have done.
Can I, can I ask a question just on the school committee goals here? So, um, well, first, I, I think that the, the goals that you've rewritten are excellent. When we're looking at the community relations, the question that I have is just, is it, are, are you thinking of this, or are we thinking of this in terms of reviewing whether or not we should be continuing to do it? Or are we reviewing and validating what is kind of in there, right?
Question number one is, is this something we should do? That would be the first question. And then, if yes, then what should we be doing? Is the thing that we've done for the last few years anything close to what we could be doing or should be doing, if we think that's a good thing to do? And, um, that, you know, we can have a discussion about that. So I would, I would at least say, keep the goal long enough to have one discussion in one meeting about whether we should do it or not. And then we, that, if, if we say no, then we've checked off that goal box. Done, right?
Yep.
If we say yes, then we have maybe some other actions that would take place.
Yeah, and, and, sorry, Mr. Grant.
Sorry, we can, that's-
Go ahead.
Um, so, I, I, one of the things that I, I think we had talked earlier about, Dr. Price, was just, um, I know it's on the website. Are we able to get information in terms of how often it's pulled down? Or how often does someone come into the office and, for example, ask for it, or do we mail it out?
Um, so I asked Mr. Grant about the pulling it down on the website. I did not ask Ms. Segari about how often anyone comes down, comes in and gets it.
Yep.
She's watching at home. Um, you can text Mr. Gilligan the answer, if you'd like, Ms. Segari. I'm assuming it's zero, but, um, but, um, but Mr. Grant was gonna look into whether or not we could actually track that. He was not sure.
Okay, and then I guess my follow-up is, um, and I don't know the answer to this, but, you know, is there any requirement, um, at the state level for submission of any, anything like this? And then, I know that in part of the town meeting packet, there's kind of a statement or a status of the school department.
Yes.
We certainly don't take that mammoth document and kind of insert it in there. So I'm just kind of curious if there's anything, I, I don't know of anything town-related that really requires that, so just trying to figure that out.
No, and I don't think they would want that much information, uh, to be included in a town meeting report.
Right, no, I, I don't think they do either, especially if we're pan-posted, so, okay, all right.
So, so mainly comment on, and first of all, I, I appreciate, and I, I think you did a great job in the district priorities. I guess for the school committee, um, goals, I'm wondering if we would also want to adopt benchmarks and, uh, performance states, so that we at least are consistent and, again, lay out the way that we're gonna, we're gonna get our work done, to say, yes, it was successful, no, it wasn't.
I, I would agree.
Okay.
So I would, I would, since both of these are things that I'm involved in, I would be willing to take a cut at that.
Okay.
For the two goals.
For the two school committee goals.
Now, and let me just say, having said that, um, I'm of the opinion that the last bullet under governance-
Yeah?
Yeah, the, the same last bullet, right? The collaborative with superintendent, I'm sort of thinking we can waive that. I don't quite, I don't know, I don't know what we were thinking when we said that, something or other, but-
So I think the district priorities coupled with the, the clear thoughts on my evaluation-
Yes.
Cover that, in my opinion.
I agree.
That's what I'm thinking. So I would say now we're down to two goals. One is the performance report, and the other is policies.
Yes.
Yes, and-
Right. And we would have bench- benchmarks and re- and results, right? The, the same, same format as what Dr. Price has done for priorities.
I agree.
Does that, does that make sense? So if I took a cut at those two for our next meeting?
So key actions and benchmarks?
Correct.
I think that would work, and if others have suggestions or input, uh, please forward that to Belle, so that she can forward it to Mr. Mr. Lippert. And, uh, maybe we can just keep this on the agenda for one more meeting, and hopefully close on this, uh, at our next meeting, on the twenty-second. Okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Uh, moving on to discussion of, um, I'm sorry, the second reading of the staff positions.
So I have some bad news. Our attempt at moving a teaching assistant from Atkinson to fill the needs, um, is no longer a viable option, as that we had a student move into, uh, the Atkinson district, um, last week, who has a one-on-one, uh, required on his IEP. So, um, we're back to the forty-four thousand dollar request, and, um, my level of excitement last week is now tempered by the reality this week. Um, but it, the position needs are exactly what we articulated last time.
So again, these, so now the request is for a teaching assistant at the high school, teaching assistant at Franklin, and then the point two increase in the speech.
Yes, correct.
Forgive me, for, uh-
For speech.
Yeah.
And that's at the high school as well, correct?
As at the high school, correct, sorry.
So procedurally, um, we probably need to get the motion, um, to approve this, and then we can talk about it. So, um, entertain a motion to approve, um, the administration's request for three additional staff positions for twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars.
Still move?
So, or yes, and?
Second.
Seconded, okay, so now we can, we can discuss. Um, any other conversation or any other discussions?
Just, uh, one clarification?
Um, the way it's worded for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, whenever we add a position outside of the budget process, it is only approved for that year.
Doesn't carry forward.
Correct. It would have to be presented in the budget, um, that's approved in February for it to carry forward.
That's a good point.
Mr. Rose, would it be worthwhile to have someone give Ms. Warren a, like, sixty-second update on what we all heard last time?
Wouldn't it be helpful?
Sure, that's great.
Why, we're, just, just a quick one, all right?
Seems correct. Over to you, Mr. Mealy. Just, uh, good point. A quick synopsis.
So I can quickly give you a, so, um, not to get into all the details, we went through a collaborative process where, um, this was presented to the full leadership team. We vetted it. The leadership team agreed and understood the impact of this on our bottom line. Um, we have approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars remaining to spend for the year, to make it to the end of the year. This would be an allocation of forty-four thousand of that. And the places that we are in need is we have a, a student at the high school, um, a program that needs some additional support. It, it's really a compliance issue and, and not much discussion on terms of that one. Um, we have a program over at the Franklin, um, another, um, partial inclusion program, uh, that is in need of an additional teaching assistant, as the program, we believe, is now gonna, is up to nine students, and maybe a tenth coming. And then, um, we have a student at the Kittredge, although we had one teaching assistant already, um, saved from previous years. Um, a- and we're gonna need a, a s- teaching assistant at the, at the Kittredge. Um, and then, in order to just deal with the changing, uh, increase in population at the high school, we need an additional speech for one day, point two. Anything to add to that, Mr. Mealy?
No, that covers it.
There we go.
So this, this comes out of our unallocated bud- not a, uncom- unencumbered budget? And this doesn't include, um, any circuit breaker carry forward, or was this assuming at seventy-two percent?
It, we found out that when they said fully funded, they meant what was predicted to be funded, not the seventy-five percent. So we're getting what we had carried forward in our budget. There will be no additional funding.
No increment, okay. Okay?
And just to refresh my memory, this is forty-four thousand, that doesn't include benefits, that comes from the town side?
Correct. It's not come out of our operating budget.
And the town manager is aware of that, or?
Correct, we spoke with him, and he knows.
Excellent. Any other conversations? So, all in favor of approving the administration's request for additional staff positions as presented in the packet, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all abstained, five oh, thank you. Moving on to the moment follow-up.
So, uh, in reaction to questions asked last time, um, we, uh, did the NAMs class size average. I just want to be very clear that we did that based on English language arts class sizes as their teams. So it gets very complicated at the middle school, you know, third grade's pretty easy, you get into, so we did ELA. But that gives you a really good class size average in terms of as kids move from the different subjects. So you'll see that, um, this year specifically, um, we have a little bit of a spike in the seventh grade, but that just carries over from last year. Um, a dip in the eighth grade, but again, that carries over from the previous year. So, um, you know, our class sizes, um, you know, are below the twenty-eight mark. Some are below the twenty-five, in seventh grade we're not, which is, you know, our, our, uh, our average, our desire at this level is twenty-five. So, um, this was just what you had asked for, Mr. Lippert? And then, um, Mr. McDevitt, you had asked for the next piece of information, which is, um, the percentage of students from eighth to ninth grade, um, going to private or parochial school. And this is to the best of our reconstruction.
Okay.
So this is the, the non-matriculation?
Yes, so they, NAMs graduates, so students who graduated from the middle school, who are now attending private or vocational schools. And some of this is at Greater Lawrence. We have thirteen students there right now. So, um-
Thirteen, that's-
Right, is that the number? That's, I met with them this week, thirteen.
But my impression from the previous graph from the middle school is it doesn't look like there's any more stress on the middle school in their hands.
No, the middle school has remained, in terms of distress, the same.
Does distress, does it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, um-
Okay. So, nothing new?
Yeah, there, there's no dramatic trend, is what we saw. And class sizes are, you know, between twenty-three and twenty-six.
Almost twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Do you have any, any thoughts on the, uh, the graduation curve? I mean, is that just sort of normal variation, do you think?
I mean, for me, it, it seems like there's not a massive move up or down. I mean, slightly up, but down from the year before. I mean, if, you know, you're looking at a percentage here that's quite small, so a small number of kids differential.
Right.
So this did not jump out to me as anything that was concerning from last year.
Right.
So to put this in scale, what it, what, do you, do you recall the number that custodians-
So the class would be, um, about four hundred?
Probably four hundred.
Yeah.
You're talking almost forty.
Forty kids. Yep.
Bet he's dropped, so that's, compared on the same number.
Yeah, and, well, the year before, say, it was, you know, nine, maybe eight and a half, it would have been, you know, thirty-five kids.
There, there was a point, I remember, um, where it was significantly higher. I'm gonna say probably about eight, nine years ago, and then it has gradually kind of dipped down into this kind of-
Range.
Ten, under ten percent range, but there was a point where it was, um, I don't know what the number was, but it was higher, twenty.
Yeah.
Another interesting number is the number of students that come back sophomore year of high school. We do get, we have a few returns.
Yeah.
And that is, you know, with the, with the information presented last week, you saw an increase in the percentage of students at the high school. So that, your comment would be commensurate with more students staying in. We were only really able to go with the four years of data, and when I looked at this, I didn't see anything that jumped out, because you're talking about just a few kids differential, family making those decisions. Yeah.
Hard to see this as a trend either way.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You ask, and we deliver.
Data-informed decision.
Data-informed decisions, exactly. Great, so moving on to, uh, jumping on to our eight B, our budget directives discussion, a lot that we've, we've passed. So within the packet, we have, um, this is the twenty-sixteen budget directive, so I think this is really where, you know, my, my interpretation of our class size information is it's high, we don't want this high. And do we do anything differently, other than, you know, set the high watermark to something that we're not comfortable with or not, not happy with? Uh, this is, I think this is the place that we have that conversation. So we, we'll be voting on this, um, next meeting, correct? This is a, I'm trying to recall, this is something that we do have to vote on?
Yes.
Yes.
And I guess this, this is the point where I'd like to hear conversation on whether we think twenty-nine is the right cap, and what the impact will be.
I think I'd love to hear from the administration about their perspectives on the class size and the cap of twenty-nine, if possible.
We talked about this quite a bit last week when we were looking at the-
Spending a lot of time on this one.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time, Zora, the last meeting, um, in a slideshow with the, with the different stress points. And, um, actually, um, we were doing better than I thought we were, just, you know, anecdotally, off the top of my head. So when we looked really closely at it, um, there was actually, I think we got down to about forty, only about forty percent-
Forty percent.
Over at the elementary. So, I mean, ideally, we'd like to have much smaller class size, and that's been a goal for a long time. Um, we've had guidelines that stayed the same for quite some time, and frequently, um, you know, we hit stress points up and down, although the, the enrollment stays somewhat the same. Uh, there's always a pressure point, depending on how many kids were born that year, how many kids live in a particular neighborhood. I think we do a really good job with our, our neighborhood placement. Uh, very few involuntary transfers, and that's typically someone that moves into the community from another community in June or July. But it's something that we look at closely every year, and we monitor all spring, meet with principals to try to get the right distribution. But I think, if I recall correctly, there were three classes last time, in the elementary particularly, that were highlighted- particularly that were highlighted in blue as stress points for us, one being the Kittredge third grade, and then there were two others I don't recall off the top of my head, so, you know, they, they are higher, and particularly from my perspective, I, I get, I, the K to two is probably the most important to me around class size. That's my opinion, and Dr. Price, feel free to chime in.
Yeah, so, just to get very concrete, I think we've tried very hard not to have any class exceeding twenty-eight students. I think that that would be a move that we would support. I know it's only one, but, you know, getting closer to thirty, I, I just, you know, twenty-eight's not where we want to be, so anyways, that would be one thing I might suggest. You know, I, I thought that the analysis based on our percentage of classes above our, was, was a useful one. And I wonder if one of our goals could be to reduce the percentage of classes that are above our recommended levels. So we, we had about forty percent, and I wonder if we could hold ourselves to trying to make it thirty-five percent. And, you know, understand, we're not gonna go from zero to a hundred in a day, but could we, if we, you know, for five, you know, for five years, if we reduced it by five percent, we would be down at a place, you know what I mean? So I, I just wonder if that's a metric that we could use, because that felt like it resonated with all of us.
Having said that, I also think that you're, you're actually making it seem a little bit worse than it necessarily needs to seem, because that overage could be, could mean different things. It could be one student, or it could be five students. Five students would be a whole different thing than one. So if it's twenty-six, that's one thing.
Right.
And we're like, well, you know, but if it was like thirty versus twenty-five, that's a big deal, right?
Right.
So I think we'd need to fine-tune the number a little bit.
And we, and we did that, I mean, you could look at both.
Yeah, 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 no, no, that, that's why the underlying graph, she had some really nice bar charts.
I saw that, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I think, having taught, to go from twenty-four to twenty-six, even though it's only two, it, I mean, that, that is a significant difference.
I get it, yeah, and I'm not, yeah.
These are guidelines.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absent of redistricting every year, every six months, you, you can't do that, there's gonna be ebbs and flows, I mean, just two summers ago, in the middle of summer, family, four kids moved onto my street. I'm sure the people at Kittredge weren't expecting that, you know, so all of a sudden that number goes up a little bit. It's just, these, these are the ranges we want to be in, and I think you're doing your best and I have the confidence in all of you to, to try to, to meet these goals.
But, but I, I think that's a, maybe a worthwhile discussion topic, which is to set a goal to have some reduction.
Yeah, just some reduction in that number, and we've made progress.
So I think. I think Dr. Price mentioned last time, she had a couple of long-range ideas too, she mentioned four or five, because the reality is, it's not only a personnel issue, it's a space issue.
Yep.
And over time, I mean, you know, you could add five teachers, so you had five elementary teachers and we had the space, it doesn't dramatically drop it. It's because there's fifteen of every grade level, give or take. But I thought that some of those long-range ideas, thinking about personnel as well as create, being creative and also, you know, the plan and the capital improvement with some additional space down the road, really made a lot of sense.
So I agree, and to echo what Mrs. Tricia had said, I agree these are guidelines or guidances, but truth be told, I mean, when you have to, you know, you have a student in a class at twenty-eight, that's unnerving, and externally, I think we may be negatively perceived because of our class size, and we're a very efficient organization. We do an awful lot and have great performance with very, very lean, lean spending, high class sizes or what could be considered high class sizes. I think we have an opportunity to try to address that rather than let it go, yeah, well, we'd really like to see twenty-five, we're at twenty-eight this year, we're very sorry.
Again, I would put this in the same category as Dr. Price did with our goals and turn them into priorities. I mean, they're not like hard and fast, we're gonna draw a line in the sand and that's it, but I think it's good for us to keep focusing on them so we don't lose sight of this, and now we have maybe some more data.
I, I agree, but I'm wondering if, if we're enabling the administration to deal with this creatively, short of, you know, every six months redistricting, to balance out the, the school size. If we were to say hypothetically that we want no class bigger than twenty-eight, and we'd like to have a cap of less than thirty-five percent of any class exceeding the recommended size, just as a, you know, as a floater, would we be able to accomplish that? Would we be able to have, you know, flexible student, school allocation or assignment that would accommodate that?
I think part of the challenge with that is, I mean, when you take a school like Kittredge or Thompson where you have two classes in a grade, I mean, that just becomes incredibly more challenging to do, but, you know, as long as we're keeping that in mind, I mean, three kids moving into a grade at, at Sargent kind of gets distributed a little bit differently than, you know, you jump some of those to other classes up by two. So I, I think Mr. Limpert's point about, you know, where are we in terms of our overages and trying to redistribute that piece, I think is an interesting.
And if, you know, I, I would keep reiterating, there's the neighborhood school issue here, you know, I mean, some parents are willing to live with twenty-eight students in a class to keep their, their students in the school they're in. So, I mean, we don't get penalized for that, and, you know, we get rewarded for not redistricting their students out of their school, so, you know, it's, it's, it is a more complicated issue than just looking at numbers, it's not quite that simple.
It's still the same amount, so even when you talk about redistricting, it just ends up with other ebbs and flows in those neighborhoods.
Yep, yep.
Because it's the same amount of classes, the same amount of kids.
So do we have projections for the next, next six or eight years? Do we have, I mean, are we looking outward like that? Because I, I think we're just kind of spinning the wheels on, on just, on this issue here, because I think these, these guidelines are appropriate, and you, I, I have confidence, like I said, if there's overages, you're gonna do your best, you're gonna come up with creative solutions to try to minimize class size, but short of, you know, asking for a major override, building a new school, you know, you nibble on the edges.
Yeah.
Right, and, and the enrollment projection model is very similar to the capital plan in that you don't go out further than five years, but we do five years, and then you adjust it every year for another five years, so it's a rolling five years, but you don't go any further than that, it's, it's just not gonna be reliable.
That may be a more productive exercise, if we, if we saw those numbers and see where we're gonna be and maybe we set our goals that way, but.
And typically the.
The enrollment projections. Typically, the enrollment projections have looked pretty flat, you know, going out. We haven't seen anything that would indicate that we're gonna have a lot more students here. You know, the, the one issue that we continue to have to deal with are bubble classes, you know, that go through the system and cause stress and have the overages, you know, class by class and school by school. That's one of the issues we always have to deal with, just saying.
So, again, just so I understand as a new superintendent, I mean, you had a goal of these class sizes, only in sixty percent of the, of the cases you actually hit your goal, so last year in your budget for this year. So, you know, I, I think, you know, this is a goal, and it held, you know, these are directives as we build the budget, basically to make sure we're focusing on class size, and it's something that we will be focusing on, and so, you know, we're not gonna hit, we're not gonna get every class in that range, it's just not gonna happen, so really, this is just, hey, team, as you're building the budget, keep class size in mind, and reducing class size and trying to keep it in these areas is part of your thinking. And at times, even if we have the money in the operating budget at Kittredge for fourth grade next year, I'm not confident I can, I can't create another one, so you're, we're just doing the best we can.
So I, I agree with what you've said, Mr. Limpert and I both recall when we moved the, the cap a few years, no, more than a few, but years ago, and it was a difficult decision because we really felt strongly that class size was something that, you know, we had, we had a big bubble we had to contend with, and it was difficult to get us to where we're at, and ultimately, I would feel more comfortable if we had the opportunity to, again, try to make our guidelines consistent with where we really feel we should be performing, unless we feel a class size of twenty-nine is okay, which I frankly don't.
And who, who wants to, who wants to vote for raising the class size goal? I mean, that's not the, we, we wanna.
That's like voting for cutting the budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a necessary element years ago, that I'm wondering if we can now take a step to put them back in line with where we think they should be.
So we get at least twenty-eight.
Correct.
I, I think, again, I'd like to see the projections going forward, and if they're flat, they're flat, but, you know, it makes no sense trying to change it right now. It is what it is this year.
This is for next year, though. This is, this is the directive for.
FY sixteen, which we're at right now.
So, Mr. Tricia, I think that twenty-eight is a change, we have no class in the district right now that is twenty-nine, and, you know, it, it would be a small step, but I think an important step to move from twenty-nine to twenty-eight, and, and again, that would not be changing practice, there is no twenty-nine student class in the district right now.
And we've been using twenty-eight now, particularly where it gets crowded is the three to five.
We have been using twenty-eight.
We've been using twenty-eight, so if we get a twenty-ninth, that's where we've had them go to another place.
So I think that would be more in line with.
Right.
I think last time, Dr. Price, you outlined some other kind of creative strategy you could use to reduce, maybe we could start talking about those things, because the, the number's the number, I'm not, I'm not ginned up on it at all. If it goes in twenty-nine, twenty-eight, so be it, but, again, short of redistricting every year, the other strategies that people would have to say, do we really want to do that, that's, I think, is, is more important than getting to that number. Is that a, a technique or strategy that we want to employ?
Yeah, I mean, again, if you go back to the priorities, we talked about how we would do that, so, you know, again, this is a multi-year effort to try to do that, as we discussed last time. I would also think in terms of the budget directives that maybe the performance-based budgeting, we, we mirror a little bit more of the priorities around targeted initiatives. And, and what I mean by that, just to understand, is transition performance, budget for services and supports, I, I'm wondering if we really can just talk a little bit about targeted initiatives, I mean, you know, performance-based budgeting, and you're not, if a second grade's not working, you're not gonna not have a second grade, but there are some things that we, you know what I mean?
Dismissed.
Yeah, so I, I like the idea of the targeted view of this.
Can I make just a, I don't know if it's a suggestion or an observation, but when I look at the, the third goal here, and it says, you know, level-one status, to me personally, I just almost have an issue with that, because that is placing the focus of the results of the MCAS directly in our, our goal, and I don't necessarily feel like we should be teaching or guiding anything in terms of, you know, how we perform on the MCAS, and I think that, you know, if we're doing, if, if we're making the right decisions, if we're, you know, looking at the prior year, if we're focusing on the development, then tho, it's a development academically of our students that is the goal, it's not hitting the level-one status, and, and that may come as a result, but I don't know if literally just saying level-one is where we want to be.
I cannot agree with you there. I, I absolutely, when you were having conversations last year and I was watching them as the incoming superintendent, I have strong reaction to our goal being level-one. I think our, our goal is the best education we can create in North Andover, coupled with the fact that the state around levels is a complete mess right now, i.e., and I wrote about it in my newsletter.
That sounded like more like joke than mess to me, I don't know, it sounded more like joke than.
It was, it's a mess, in that the students and districts who took Park have not gotten all of their results, so as a result, no district has gotten their level, and it is anticipated in early December. So, I mean, at this point, it's a moving target, we're not sure if we're going in the MCAS or Park direction, I, I think, just given the logistics of it, it makes no sense, and I think it is not a target goal that is really under, it's about the best we can do.
Right.
The way this came about was the, trying to get some concrete way we could measure something, right? This was a measurement that was a concrete thing, you can get a piece of paper and has a number on it and gives you this, versus, I think we're doing okay, yeah, we did better this year.
Respectfully, Mr. Limpert, it's, it's not a number that really means that much, and so when we go back to how we wrote the targeted initiatives component, I think that we can really come up with a data-driven decision-making about allocation around some things, but I think level-one status is not.
I, I'm good, but I always in my mind was, was imagining those school-level reports that chose the gaps in performance.
Yep.
That relate to that, so if you have some other way to do the same thing, and you come back to a school by school and say, this school needs this, that school needs that, I'm good with that.
That was.
For academic performance and student achievement, I'm fine, it doesn't have to be, have anything to do with MCAS, but it should be coupled to, with student performance, academic achievement, and if you want to give us some other data that does that and then ties it to the budget, performance-based.
That process will begin at the next meeting.
I'm good, then I'm perfectly fine with that.
Instead of saying level-one, put it, and, and I forget what the acronym is, but, you know, the student growth percentile, and it may be SGP or something, but focusing on, you know, increasing that, and, and that is our goal.
That's still just MCAS.
That's just MCAS.
But, but it's not the level-one, right?
Right.
I mean, that, that, it may come as a result of increasing their growth percentile, but to, to be a level-one means, you know, there was a couple of years ago, it was one kid in one class, if they'd gotten one question wrong, that school wouldn't have been a level-one. Well, the reality is, the growth percentile was still excellent, the students were performing, and they're, just because it's a level-two or a level-one doesn't mean we're providing any level, any different level of education to those students.
So I think what we're asking for is that, that, let's, I feel like what we're saying is that we're open to new ways of measuring the improvement in the growth academically of our students, and I think we're open to new ways of doing that, but I, I do agree that, that I think this did come about because we just, we needed something that, that, right, that we could, that we could discuss and have, have to, to look at in terms of, of data and being able to support what was happening.
In full agreement, and I think when we, when we put that into our, our guidelines, it was because that is, while it may not be meaningful internally, it is meaningful externally, and communities are.
Not anymore.
Well, with this year, with your, this year changing, fair statement, but, you know, again, last year, the year before, when, when you look at comparative communities and when you look at, you, where do you want to bring your family to grow, that was a measure that is out front on all of the community evaluation boards, and for us to come and create a, a price, a price metric, metric, and work from there, that is probably more meaningful to the district, but I think we also have to be considerate of how we are represented outside to, you know, to bring, you know, bright and young families into our community.
I think Dr. Price's point is right.
Which is the, the whole process has now been corrupted, so it doesn't make, everybody's level-two, so there are only level-one districts.
Are there other external metrics that might be useful?
I would just like to say, Mr. Gilligan was a big level-one, level fan, and he is, he cried for twenty-four hours the other day about this.
I was a level-one fan when it was an equal playing field where everyone was taking the MCAS, because it just, it gave us how we did it, versus school percentile, you know, there were a lot of things that were really concrete about it, although just one measure, and I wasn't saying that that should be the most important, but Stan, you just said it best, the, the system is so corrupted at this point, with half the state taking Park, half the state taking MCAS, it doesn't matter how they rank any school, with, with only eight level-one districts last year that were normal districts other than stand-alones or charters, there's just, it, it's gonna take years of beta testing of the Park and all those things, and comparability and interpretation guides, that, there's just, it's apples and oranges now, and it's, so what are we gonna do to be the best we can be?
See, I'm going back to the, the, your first priority that you wrote, which is, for us, you know, in the priority, the two priority was, you know, you're gonna try to come up with some metrics for these two initiatives, I'm just suggesting that we just expand that process and fold it into the, it's kind of a larger budgeting view, which is, I always imagined having a school-by-school view of budgets, right? Different schools may have different needs, and those could be articulated based on student performance and academic achievement. I could be wrong, maybe that's not true, but if you could do that, that would be wonderful. Just saying.
I, I would just push that I think you can do that around some things, it's hard to do it around a lot of the core in terms of.
I understand, I understand.
Having a second-grade classroom, having a third-grade classroom.
But if there are those, those areas in a school, you know, high-needs students who need some additional support, and we need to budget for that or something, whatever it is.
So next week, when, next time we meet, the, every school principal will be coming to explain what is their area of, of need, moving forward, and that's the beginning of that process.
Perfect.
This is somewhat out of order, where, you know, maybe based on that learning, we might be better, better armed, if you will, to establish the right budget directives for next year. But with that said, I, I do like the, you know, what was mentioned about targeting specific initiatives to improve student performance and, you know, insert here.
Yep.
And maybe we can get that ammunition from, from the next visit with the school principals. Budgeting for technology, anything else in here that we want to talk about?
You know, I would respectfully suggest that maybe, we've made so much progress now that maybe this isn't quite as important as it was. You know, we've come such a long ways. And we have a, we almost have a plan now going forward of what we're going to do for the next couple of years. So I would say, from my point of view, this has become far less of an issue than it was in the last two or three years, personally.
Can I make a suggestion, actually? I was actually going to add to it.
Oh, okay.
I was hoping that we could add to the list their curriculum and also personnel, looking at a technology integration specialist to... I think we have added a lot of infrastructure. We've added a lot of equipment, but I don't think we've necessarily added all the components to really make it effective.
So sort of change this from the hardware to the support side.
So, right, so I think, I don't know about the tools and I'm assuming the training we want to keep in the infrastructure. I don't know, but I think any sort of focus that we can put on the technology curriculum, and I think that would be, you know, partly coupled in with the training, but also I would love to see an integration person to be working with the district heads and certainly within the schools to be supporting teachers and learning. But I don't know, it's just a suggestion.
So wouldn't that be one of those targeted initiatives, if we're wise about what we put upstairs? Or couldn't that be, could that be one of those targeted initiatives?
Can you just explain?
So if we're going to, if we're going to reconstitute the transition to performance-based budgeting, I would expect that we'll start seeing, based on the principal's report, where our initiative opportunities are. And that might be one of those targeted initiatives that we can roll up as a specific element rather than...
Again, this should, this may be just, this is a document that our directives outline our priorities so that that happens, so we actually see that. That's all I'm saying. And I think Ms. Warren has a good idea, which is, we've transitioned from the hardware side to the software side, if you will. I mean, now the support side, right? Now we can use support and application versus this, which we were way behind on, and now we're better. So that's not a bad idea.
I think we have to keep focus on it. I mean, it's just, it's ever-growing, it's ever-changing, and it's where so much is headed. But I really like Mrs. Warren's point of, you know, just the curriculum coordinator, we heard Mr. Grant, I don't know if it was last week or two weeks ago, you know, we had looked at putting in six hundred computers. I think we had kind of budgeted for that, and I think we did two, or roughly two. And part of the reason for the pushback, or the pullback, I guess, on that was making sure that we weren't just putting devices out there and that we had a better plan. And so I think that message kind of is there, and I think Mrs. Warren brought it up back in the spring, that, you know, we can't just put a computer in a classroom and expect it to do wonderful things. We've got to have the collaboration and the development in order to make sure that that happens. So I would think that we should be adding to that.
One other area that I would ask you to consider is, as I've come into this district, I have really seen the class size issue, I've seen the technology and the technology personnel support issue. The third issue that has really risen to the top in my initial assessment is curricular materials. So specifically, books, materials, access to, you know, online platforms. We have, during more severe times budgetarily, we have reduced, might I say, gutted our curriculum resources in the district, and I think it's time to pay some attention to those again. And I think that that should be part of our directives to see if we can enhance the curricular offerings. And I think that's really important, as we're trying to create a more consistent approach to all sorts of our educational process with our facilitators. We need to be able to give the teachers the materials so that there is a consistent experience across elementary schools, that there is a high level of experience in our middle and high schools. So I think that's something that we need to examine and focus on a little more. Would you agree, Mr. Gilligan?
Wholeheartedly. Priority number one on my list.
I was just saying, and that was planted.
There's a cumulative effect over the years of freezing the principals' just their school-based budget for some of the basic supplies and materials. But after the federal funding years back dried up ARA, some of the other big things, and with the tight budget that we have had the last few years, there hasn't been really anything left over for updated materials. So the teachers have done a great job collaborating, using what we have, creating new things as well, but it would be great to have some money for some updated...
Historically, the last time we had any discussion about curricular materials was actually about six years ago. I remember having a very clear discussion about, is that enough? Is that too much? Because we had a curriculum materials line in there, and we haven't had one since then. We haven't spent anything, as far as I know, in a number of years on that.
Truth be told, is it new curriculum exploration, or is it to backfill existing textbooks and materials that...
Yes. I mean, in some cases, it's one, in some cases, it's the other. You know, there have been allocations when principals are given their budget, but we have, we have not had district allocation for curriculum, which then, again, creates less of a consistent, as principals are making individual decisions.
This really goes back to the program-based budgeting situation, because there are pieces around where we have invested in new materials when we introduce a new program. We buy new stuff. So that's like curriculum materials. We have done that in the past few years. Not a lot, but we have done some of that. But when, you know, we don't see that all as one package, so we don't know what that number is, small, large, whatever. And as you point out, Dr. Price, the principals are trying to do their own thing in the background, just protect themselves as they're buying stuff to replace things that are...
Could that also potentially support the elementary literacy model? I mean, is that an area?
Yes. You know, elementary literacy is something that we're working very hard on, and that there is inconsistency across the district. And I think a district approach and a district adoption is something we should really consider.
Yeah, I mean, we've been working really hard on best practices to teach to the standards that the state requires, and the teachers have done a great job, but it would be nice to get the newer materials and the leveled readers so that we have all of those things at the elementary schools, not things that we piece together from, you know, ten or fifteen years of different programming. You know, certainly Reading Street is a good core base, but there's a lot of other supplemental stuff and new stuff out that we've been working really hard on to train teachers and give us the, you know, that early literacy is just so critical to our success down the road.
This sets up actually very nicely with the priority, especially the budget priority of identifying initiatives, because you have the directives, and they play right into, you know, identifying initiatives that address those directives.
So it's kind of like flying down Altima right now, because we're not going to know if we hit our goals for high-need learners, and we won't know what new opportunities for target initiatives will be until next week.
So, I mean, we obviously know, we've looked at the data. But in terms of school-by-school, I'd really like to have the principals report that to you. And in terms of, you know, in terms of the initiatives, we have articulated two that we are going to assess this year already. But yeah, I mean, we have not determined what our initiatives are. I mean, just back to the fact that I'm through this whole entry process, one of my goals is to focus on trying to create some key actions and have those work with the budget process. So that's kind of the timeline we're on, we are on the timeline we set out a month or two ago.
Okay, so what, are we expected to have this finalized for next week and ready to vote on it?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. We don't need till the twenty-second. So we don't, I mean, this is all based on what's helpful for us as we build the budget. The budget will not be presented till January, so if we want to have a conversation again about it and then vote on it in November, that's fine, too. This is just us, get, as we start to figure out the budget, you know, what are our guidelines, what are our directives?
Can I make a comment or observation just on the last one? So we've always kind of looked at what initiatives we needed to put in place for high-leads, high-needs learners or special education. So for example, we put in an autistic program at the middle school two or maybe three years ago. But we're also, you know, we know that we're continuously sending kids out of district at significant cost. And we have funding in the budget, CIP funding, I should say, for additional classrooms and spaces. And I'm wondering if that may be something that we would look at in terms of combining... You smile, like, "Yeah, I already thought of that."
Yeah, we spent a bit of time this week talking about something that we may present pretty quickly to you.
Okay, because I'm just, I mean, if we have an opportunity to keep those students in town as opposed to having to send them out, you know, in addition to, you know, it's just better for families. And if that has an opportunity where we've got a program, and it's a great program, and we have neighboring towns who are then sending our kids, or we can do some form of a consortium, like we have with Andover with the TOPPS program, you know, we're sharing those costs. I think that if we've got that facility space, it may just align itself.
So again, a quick assessment of this, again, very early, is that we have done, we have a number of partial inclusion programs in our district, but we have not developed any substantially separate programs. And so when a student needs to be kind of removed from the class in a higher rate, we are sending those kids out. So I think that all of us are feeling that there's going to be some need for substantially separate programs, that, you know, the kids will still be included as much as possible, but the model will not be a full inclusion or even a partial inclusion. And we do not have a substantially separate program other than, some might argue, the Scarlet Night Academy, which happens after school. But that's a very different thing. Many of the kids aren't on IEPs. So it is an area of need, one of assessment that we're looking at. And just to kind of tip my hand to what we were talking about, a place that we really need to look at, maybe even this year, is at the elementary school, where we are sending kids out. You saw some of the money they were sending out to Crest for elementary school. And we may see if we could even get something off the ground this year around a substantially separate elementary school program, which would be cost-helpful. But that is an area that I think many of the educators in this district realize that we have not moved to that yet. They're hard to build, they're difficult, you need some skill. We'll bring in some resources, but that is a place of growth, I think.
It's significant growth.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll look forward to revisiting these next meeting. Okay. Last thing on our new business for this evening is just a quick update on subcommittee progress. I would like to at least try to get some feedback and an indication of where we stand on the activities. So as a reminder, Ms. Warren and I are working on policy. We're still establishing a, we're establishing a charter, but the objective here is to review our entire policy manual and identify tier-one policies that are either in need of overhaul, urgent adaptation or correction, tier-two being those that are, you know, needing maintenance, and tier-three being those that we would likely either not need anymore or merge into other documents so that we can thin out a lot of the noise, so we speak. So Ms. Warren and I will be continuing to do that work and hopefully be able to report out before December on the inventory across those three tiers. And Ms. Warren, if you had any other comments or... Okay. So I know, I just handed off last year's activities and facility use to Mr. Tracy, so I don't know if there's any other update you want to provide.
No, I have no update, but I will look at this closely, and I imagine I'd probably set up some time with you, Mr. Mealy, in the near future to discuss this. I mean, I think what we heard today from the Music Association is a perfect example. There's a little unknown factor on when and why we should be granting these waivers. I think there's probably a lot of worthy groups that are going to come forward, and we should be prepared for it. So I'll look into that more.
Mr. Lippett?
Well, the only thing, negotiations, sure, we're going to do that. We're going to do more of that. School building, hiatus, right? So nothing there. So that's pretty much it for me.
No overrides plan for the school building?
No, I don't think so, no. I can't use the O-word anymore, so I've been told I can't say that word. The only thing I would suggest is, it's, it may be beyond the scope of what you and Ms. Warren want to do, which is policies specifically related to technology. So I, you know, that may be an area where, because it was, it's been on my list for now three years, right? I was tasked by Ms. Berzleff to do that about three years ago. That may be something that we might want to consider breaking out separately from what you're doing in terms of the big policy review, because it's a very specialized but very kind of information-intensive activity. So I wouldn't, I would be remiss if I didn't continue to volunteer to try to do that, if you want to, if you think that, if between the two of you, you think that's something worthwhile doing, which would be technology as it relates to policies necessary or appropriate.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, but I think you also have unique insights into the rest of the manual.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to continue to do that. I got from Ms. Zagar the, if you will, the table of contents, which in and of itself is about fifty pages, you know. And I'm going to try to go through that and try to do the Pareto thing on that, see if I can find the ten or twenty percent that we might really want to think about, you know, based on what I've seen over the last few years. And then I'd hand that off to you, you two, and you could decide how to deal with that, but...
That would be greatly appreciated. And I agree, technology is a big TBD right now, because we're not sure where the gaps are. Is it around, and what the district needs are in terms of, is it a focus on student-teacher collaboration after hours over technology? Or is it on appropriate use of technology in the buildings?
I think we're sort of fortunate in that we have waited so long that we can actually, I think generously borrow from other places to see what they've done.
But the other advantage we've had is, we haven't had a problem because we haven't had technology. So nobody's had a chance to do the wrong thing because we haven't had that opportunity at all. Now that we have the technology, all of a sudden, we're going to have to start thinking about that because we have students with devices who can now do the wrong thing. And we have to, you know, start to think about that. And that's where now, policy needs to be discussed and reviewed and thought about. And again, policy that's really helpful, not harmful, right? I mean, we don't want to keep people from doing stuff.
I agree.
We just want to provide the right kind of protection and blah, blah, blah.
So we'll continue to vote on that, and I appreciate you forwarding that corpus of work as well to guide us. Mr. Devon?
Nothing new at this point. I'll touch base with Dr. Price and Mr. Mealy on the planning and try to work on a charter, okay?
And I guess the only other two is the budget communication. I think it's going to be helpful for us to start socializing what we think our performance or target initiatives would look like in the budgeting process, through, you know, the work that Mr. Mealy and Dr. Price are doing. But also that we can, I think, start socializing that with Board of Selectmen and with INCOM so that they understand it, they know where it's coming from, they understand the value, so that hopefully we can, if we are consistent with our messaging and the importance, then, you know, there'll be less confusion across the...
I agree.
Can we go back to just have one quick discussion about the Education Foundation? This is a topic that we keep saying we want to do something about, and what would we like to do? I don't necessarily think that that's a school-committee-led initiative, but what input should we be providing to try to get that thing going? I mean, can we go out and try to recruit leadership for that, or find interested parties to head that up? You know, it's sort of like starting the Music Association from scratch, is what we're talking about here, you know? So what, if any, should be our role, the school committee's role, in jump-starting the Ed Foundation so we can start to see if that can play a part in helping us do things we want to do that we can't do other ways?
Yeah, that's a great question. At this point, I think anything we can do to try to stimulate the leadership of that organization to reactivate and re-engage would be, I think, a start.
There are no leaders now, so we'd have to find leaders. That's the point, right? That was where we left off when last this was discussed with any seriousness, which is now at least three years ago. So we were at the point where we went and talked to other Ed Foundations, and what we found out is, if you have a real go-getter, you can have an Ed Foundation. But it's not like a committee thing. It's not like you just, a bunch of people get in a room and all of a sudden fifty thousand dollars a year shows up. So, you know, it is exactly like the Music Association. I mean, it's a lot of dedicated people working a lot of hours.
I appreciate that, but Music Association was created when financial requirements gutted music from public schools, and people were very engaged with that conversation.
I understand, but, you know, we have talked about any number of initiatives here, curriculum, technology, you know, where, do we have enough money? Do we have enough technology? I would argue, no. And could we use another fifty thousand dollars a year for technology? I would argue, yes. So if we can get going on that, you know, that would be a big help. But again, I think we have to think about what our participation would be. I don't think it's a school-committee-led.
I agree, and I, and that's one of the reasons why that particular line item is a TBD. What I would propose is maybe if we can start socializing that with the other parent groups, either through our liaisonship, to at least identify that this is an opportunity that's not being leveraged, and perhaps... not being leveraged, and perhaps, as Dr. Price has described, how other districts have utilized such a resource, you know, to create this ongoing replenishment and opportunity for, for program funding. That might be what we can do immediately, to see if we can get that groundswell of, that needs to be re-energized. I, I don't know of any other approach that we might take at this point.
Can I ask Dr. Price a good question? So when you had a whole slew of entry meetings, am I correct in that you had parents who kind of really were excited and looking to develop this?
Yeah, you know, this is obviously a challenging place for a superintendent to be in, you know, this is not something that, we are not going to lead the charge on an educational foundation, that's not appropriate really for us. But I would absolutely say, as you guys liaise with the appropriate PTOs, you will may, you will be able to find some support for this, and they may be able to have some folks really lead that. So, you know, the other option would be for someone from the school committee to come to a PTO council meeting, where I mean, with all the PTO presidents, and just talk about the interest for this. That would be a great place to start, because the vast majority of the entry meetings I had were run by the PTOs, and there were people there who were interested in this approach.
I guess the other part of that is, you know, obviously you met with other people in town, so those would be people, those would be people who we wouldn't necessarily, you know, find at those meetings, you know, I mean, is there, do you know names of people that we would perhaps be able to reach out to? I mean, what do you think the best way to?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to meet with you guys and just go through my entry meeting notes and see if there's anyone I can remember.
Okay.
Great. Okay, anything else on subcommittee progress? Great.
One quick announcement.
Ah.
Just very quick.
Please.
I have just a quick announcement prior to our next meeting, just so you guys know, I'm, I'm speaking at the National Mayors Event next week that is being held at Boston College. Mayors from all over the country are coming in, I'm speaking on education, so that will be fun and interesting. And then the day of our next school committee meeting, I am a keynote speaker at the MasQ conference that's being held at Gillette, so I will be speaking there and then bringing forward some donations as a result.
What are the year-two discussions?
So the one on, at the National Mayors Event is about how do we support students across the lifespan? So I'm kind of the one who's talking with some folks from Casey Foundation about how do we support kids in early adolescents and adolescents. Cede Warren, the mayor of Newton, is really focusing on this National Mayors Conference, working with the Brookings Institute, about how do we really create the ability for families to make the middle class in our country, and education is a key component of that. And then at the MasQ event, I'm speaking about, the theme is Dare to Innovate, and I'm talking about how to innovate in a regular public school, drawing pretty extensively on my previous position as a principal. So, just, just, I will not be in the district those two days, and I thought I should share that.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. So any other school committee comment before we reopen for public comment? We had that at the beginning of the meeting, we have a public remaining, so I thought I'd offer that one more time. Any other school committee comment?
What?
Nope. Nope, just a reminder, with the rainstorm, please do show up at the high school, rain or shine, there'll be a marching band competition on Saturday. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of negotiations with the North Andover Cosolia Association, where open meeting discussion will hurt our negotiation, and not to return to open meeting.
So moved.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 And yes. We re-adjourned, thank you.